Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to South Weaver City Council at six P M on Tuesday, January the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Petty and then a prayer by Councilman Davis.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather as citizens this evening to discuss the needs of our city. We pray that thy Spirit may be here with us to help guide us and direct us to the past that would be best for us and and in this community. Help us to be civil with one another and to enjoy discussion and to be able to get to the heart of the of the discussions and to be respectful. We lovely and are grateful for these opportunities we have to serve one another and and are grateful for the bounteous blessings that we get to enjoy here in this beautiful city and these blessings we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Angie and Jeremy. We'll begin with public comments. If you've got a comment, we'd ask you to come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, give your name and the city from which you reside. And we'll begin with public comments. None? That Paul says he has any.
Yeah. Uh oh. Then Paul eight twenty six East South Weaver Drive. Quick comment, because I see we got several more subdivisions coming in. A year ago, the state legislature asked the cities to do things, two things. One is to make houses cheaper if possible, and the other one was to save water. As I, and I appreciate all you guys do, because I know you do a lot in the planning commission. But as far as this directive, I give you an F. We have a seven foot park strip going all the way through our valley. That's totally ridiculous and wasted space. There's only so much ground on in this valley. And we're putting it in park strip. If you ask the citizens in this community, would you rather have a seven foot park strip? Or would you rather have an extra three to five hundred feet in your yard you could do something with? You could plant a garden, raise chickens, whatever the heck you wanted to do. But instead of the park strip, people, you can't plant anything in it besides water, besides grass. And I looked at Jody Long's place down here. He's already got his pipe ran in, but sprinkling system in there. I just think it's a total waste of space and water, and it costs several extra thousand dollars to build the house because of having to do. You don't need a six foot sidewalk. If you had a five foot sidewalk, three foot park strip, every house would get five feet plus how long your yard is, their lot is. That's a lot of ground just to be wasted. I thought there would be a lot of people here to talk about one other issue. I see Rod kind of smiling. There was a dog apparently got caught in a trap. I was up hunting deer last year after our cabin. And I got a phone call from living nearby, and she wanted to know if I'd come help get the dogs out of their sheep. I says, I'm clear up in the mountains. I can't come help catch the dog besides I'm eighty one years old. I can't run down a dog. I don't know how they got the dogs out of it. The animal control showed up at same time the people whose dogs they were coming found them. If it been fifteen to twenty years ago, you would have found those dogs. Rod, how would they have found them?
Probably did.
They'd been shot. I've never had to shoot my own dog because of the sheep, but my older brother had to shoot our own dog because it got with some other dogs and killed a bunch of sheep, our sheep. So everybody wants to have a dog, which is fine, but they need to learn to take care of them. They got to keep them on their own ground. All summer long, people walk up and down the sidewalks, and most people who were on sidewalk get dog droppings on their on their yard. Years ago, I had a neighbor had a dog. They'd let it out. Every time they'd let it out, it came to my yard. I kept saying, don't let your dog come over here every time. I couldn't mow my lawn unless I went around with a shovel and cleaned up first. How I got that dog to quit? I start picking it up with a shovel and put it right on their porch in their house. And the dog quit coming back. So no, I don't deny anybody opportunity to have a dog. I've had good dogs. But responsibility lies with the people to keep their dogs either on leash or keep their dogs home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn.
I want to keep up with Lynn. Michael Grant, twenty six, twenty two, Deer Run Drive. In March, two thousand and twenty four, when Sheriff Pope was here, I had brought up that maybe we can consider or you dot can consider putting a surveillance camera or two in South Weaver Park and Ride. I don't know what happened. Sheriff Pope had said that it's a good idea. I don't know. Maybe a good thing would be to get a follow up from you or you dot. If they don't have the funds, that's okay. But I just want to know what's going on or that they did they forget about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? See no one else. We'll move along to our consent agenda, which consists of January fourteen, twenty twenty five minutes. Council have any changes or adjustments to the minutes? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve them.
Loud echo we've.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. There was second on that.
What did it say? Seconded?
Can there a second on the favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Next item annexation petition by Nelson Holmes at approximately seventy five West South Weaver Drive. Any discussion on this? Annexation petition?
Just a little bit more detail. I background memo. I just don't know how this came about. And Brandon, you want to take that? Some homeowners, it's like we being approached or we doing effectively and because the county required all the cities to take up the unincorporated areas so they don't have anymore. Where's this coming from?
So the Riverwood subdivision have the county line going through a portion of their property between there and the and I eighty four. And Davis County and and Weaver County, along with the developer around the city, all agreed. All right. All agree that that adjusting that line to the the south, at least in the area of that subdivision, made the most sense. And so this is just so that that was done, that line was adjusted. This is just actually taking that portion where the line was adjusted and annexing it officially into South Weaver City.
Do you know where they're talking? Okay, I understand it. I just the packet material had a lot of incomplete information, just blank sheets of paper about the petition and so forth. So I'm trying to get a better explanation as to what is it we're trying to approve than annexing it in. Who's who's writing who the letter, the document in there looked like it was. Sorry if the back back feed's coming from. I don't know if there who's it sound like the developer was petitioning the city to annex in. But it says it says it was written to Davis County. But I'm sorry to figure out who's petitioning to who. Is it the developer petitioning us? Are we petitioning to ourselves because we own some land there as well?
It's the developer.
Or the developer petitioning. Because we're listed as one of the petitioners.
Yeah, we do. There is some land that the city owns.
Okay, so we also want to get into our, yeah, that makes sense.
It's cleaning up the line, the boundary.
Brandon, is there any reason why we shouldn't do it?
No, I I this has actually been a problem for a long time. So cleaning it up makes a lot of problems go away.
Okay. Look for a motion on this.
Here, I move to accept the annexation petition by Nelson Holmes.
We have a motion, a second. We'll do a roll call votes time with Councilman Haverston.
Aye.
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 Hey. Unanimous decision. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll go to the next item. amended resolution twenty four dash thirty six Riverside R V Park Development Agreement, Second Amendment. So there were just a little bit of language that we wanted to clarify on exactly when the hundred and twenty days were and how that extended was going to get extended. So.
I think. It says twenty five, but it's twenty four and I don't get that fixed.
Okay, so it's.
It's twenty four thirty six.
Twenty four thirty six.
Mm hmm.
What? Okay. Okay, any discussion on that?
Is the language fifteen point one point one, the exception to leave period required mandatory? And you actually, we got dates to that now? That's new, but we didn't have that before, did we?
That is the change that was being proposed. So when this came forward in December, the the intent was to allow this winter and next winter for that leave period basically not apply during the winter so that they could have those longer term stays. And the council requested that that end April of two thousand and twenty six. And at the same time, the request was to make sure that language kind of lined up. And as staff was working with McKay, Amy suggested that this language makes it much cleaner. Before it was language that was changing that patron section fifteen point one and talking about a calendar year and things like that. You could still say a calendar year after that one hundred and twenty days. But this simply says during this winter and next winter, that language, that leave period is suspended and people can stay, which accomplishes what we had talked about in December. Or anybody that anybody that has their one hundred and twenty day period hit one twenty and they would normally have to leave for seven days. If it's during December twenty fourth through April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty five, they would not have to leave. They could stay until April of two thousand and twenty five. If their leave period hit on May first, they would still have to leave as of May first, that that leave period would apply. And then the same thing for next winter, because this was the the trial period that we were trying to create.
So council, my understanding was when we made this motion, it was just to allow them up to two hundred and forty consecutive days, not three hundred and sixty five plus April.
Well, it was we we.
Help me.
I thought the motion, and again, we just, I maybe heard what my brain was thinking. Because we originally talking a hundred and twenty calendar days.
Exactly.
In the count or days in the calendar year.
Right.
And so that was that clock would start over January first. So that hundred and twenty, it would be up to two hundred and forty. But if you say two forty, that could even apply during the summer.
Right.
So it needs to either say a hundred and twenty consecutive days in a calendar year.
Right.
Or we need to apply it the way Davis presented it. It's basically the same thing.
It what it works either way.
It accomplishes the same goal.
It makes it a little more, clarifies it a little more if we put in a calendar year, I think.
Would it help Angie if we put a line in there that said not to exceed two hundred and forty days? Because that way we still have the date, still have all that in there, and then we could just add on so that, you know, if if there was any type of date consideration, I mean, I I don't know if that would help.
So one hundred and twenty days in a calendar year, not to exceed two hundred and forty days total? Someone did one twenty and then in January did another one twenty, is what you're saying? Yeah.
I think what Steph's done here is is that without putting the math in in the addendum. You can move in in middle of August, and if you start doing the math, hundred and twenty would end up in the middle of December, and they're saying, okay, you it doesn't apply. You could stay up until April, which is another hundred and twenty days. You go January one through April thirtieth, there's another hundred and twenty days right there. So technically, it's doing the same thing. If you moved it in May and one hundred and twenty days, you're gonna have to leave and then come back, and you'd come back in November. And then you get that hundred and twenty days. I don't think it's going to exceed two hundred and forty consecutive days the way it's written, but if if it helps, we could add that additional language, but I think it's repetitive. I think the dates, the dates we put in there was to do the trial because we were concerned about going to different owners. And, you know, we trust this current owner and how they're taking care of it and wanted to see how this would work for the next two years. So I think it works without the math put it in there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm as long as that's, I just wanted to clarify our intent on there. So I think that's fine.
Okay, with someone like to make the motion.
I move to approve amended resolution twenty four thirty six. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Twenty four thirty six River. Twenty-four thirty-six Riverside RV Park Development Agreement, Second Amendment.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Unanimous decision. Uh, next, resolution twenty-five dash zero-three Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Land Wildlife Fire Agreement. Anyone need any more clarification or discussion on this? Chief Coleman, Harry would be happy to. Stand up and say anything.
Yes, please.
Would you like?
Please.
Some background, Eric.
Yeah, this is basically the CWPP that we've talked about for years. They've just changed how they do the calculation. Our amount that we have to meet has gone up, but we've always more than exceeded the amount that they've set for us every year. And so I'm not worried about meeting the new dollar amount at all. Um, if you read through the entire document, just some other G-Wiz stuff, they they even readjusted how they calculated the UNA fire. And our financial requirement from that, had we not done this, would would have been north of three hundred thousand dollars under the new calculations. And so to me, it's kind of a no no-brainer to keep participating in this. We're going to keep doing our mitigation, education, preparation, stuff that we do every year. And like I said, we more than exceed that dollar amount already every year, so I'm not stressed about it at all.
The one clarification, what I'm hearing you to say is it's not a monetary solely commitment. It's in in-kind services and so forth that add up to.
Right, we don't cut them a check. So like our our, even like when Public Works does the Green Cleanup Day, all that hour, all those hours, all that that equipment hours, all that counts. Um, our Fire Prevention Night, the the firework flyers we do, all those things count towards the CWPP. So we're not riding uh, any dollar amount to the state. We just, I track that throughout the year. They have a way that they calculate those man-hours, and then we meet that requirement.
That was my question.
Thank you.
Well, can I ask him one more question?
Sure.
Can you give us an update on this? I'm just on our wildfire, wildland. What do we call it? Wildland program really quick, since this, we have to have this to be able to participate in that, correct? The CWPP?
We have to have red-carded personnel and brush trucks is part of that, the equipment's part of that. Is that answering your question?
No, well, so I just want to know, this cooperative wildlife wildfire system. We have to have this in order to be eligible to participate in any of the wildland fires we would send our our personnel on. Is that correct?
There's an MOU that's separate from this, um, that actually spells out those agreements, and we have an MOU in place with the state for deployments that's separate from this agreement.
More local.
Yeah, this is local. This is more our city's insurance policy. Um, if if you want the full background, I can give you the full background on this program, and I can try to do it quickly if you would like.
I just wanted to know exactly what piece of this puzzle it is.
No, yeah, so the way the CWPP came about is the state of Utah was spending tens of millions of dollars every year um, helping communities like us fight uh, urban interface fires. And the state finally said, look, this is unsustainable. So they came up with a program saying if if cities are participating in this program, education, preparation, mitigation, and that will bring down the overall number of fires, the state will still cover the cost of any large fire that impacts that jurisdiction, but only if they're doing this.
Okay.
And so it's basically insurance policy saying, hey, we want to cut down the number of fires. If more communities are doing these activities, we can bring the numbers down, create more resilient communities. And so far, the the program's been awesome for, I think, both sides. Um, and there are communities that haven't participated in the past, like Uena, next door, and they were hit with a two hundred thousand dollar bill for the UNA fire. And so it's basically just, hey, let's all work together in in symbiotic relationship here. You guys do your part, and we'll still help you guys out when you need us.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, look for motion.
Mayor, I think this is a great program, so I move to approve resolution twenty-five oh three Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands Wildlife Fire Agreement to participate in the cooperative wildfire systems for eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollar.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Haverford.
Aye.
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 Once again, unanimous, thank you. Uh, next item, public hearing. We look for a motion to open a public hearing on surplus uh, real property at approximately twenty-three hundred east South Weaver Drive.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Dave, you want to give us a little bit of background on this piece of property or thing? I think we all know. Does anyone need any clarification on this?
Need to close public hearing first.
Oh, I guess it's open to, I'm sorry. Yeah, so it's open to public, anybody want? Nobody's standing up. Well, Paul, this is your turn. Is that what you've been holding out for?
No, sir.
Oh.
No, sir, mayor, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. I jumped the gun there a little bit. Hey, Dave. You want to, does anybody need any clarification on this? Maybe Dave doesn't need to say anything.
I actually don't know where it's at.
Go ahead.
Little piece we talked about here.
It's about eight hundred square feet. Is that what we determined?
It's between the Gateway Project and the storage units. Yeah, okay. Now, remember, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh four declaring parcel one three zero three four zero zero five five at approximately twenty-three hundred east South Weaver Drive as surplus real property.
Seconded.
Starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Darius, thank you. Next item. Recycling program. We're looking here for tonight is just to continue meeting with Robinson Waste. We feel that they're or they're working, hauling all of our trash now. And with the price that they came back with is much less than anyone else. On starting this recycling program, we just want to continue a dialogue with Robinson Waste. But we're willing to talk about this rice, you know, recycling program a little bit if you'd like to.
I just have one question, if I could.
Okay.
I could have sworn that we were, we were talking about this being a weekly thing, not a bi-weekly thing. Did I hear that correctly or? Okay.
Our current, our current program is bi-weekly, and I think that's what the um, integrated waste is expecting is bi-weekly.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so I I don't think we've discussed weekly. Um, but to get, to give you a little bit more background on that, just so when, after the city sent out the RFPs, we only have three um, haulers to to choose from in this area. Two of them responded, as was stated in Dave's recap. And uh, we we, you know, sent out the RFP, we talked about making a recommendation to sign a contract with them. As a committee, we didn't feel like we had enough information from the city council to actually sign a contract. Um, and there's a lot of other decisions that need to be made as a council. You know, are we buying the cans ourself? Are we going to add that on to the you know, the delivery car, like Robinson or one of the haulers? Um, are we going to try to subsidize this as a city? Are we going to? You know, there's a lot of decisions that we need to make, that that we can't, couldn't make, and we didn't want to sign a contract. But there's a lot of things we need to get from that hauler specifically, like what will they charge if they deliver the cans, or what will they charge? You know, will they maintain the cans for us so we don't have to? Because there is a lot of cost associated with, on our side, with starting this program. And uh, we, I think we need to get more information before we can come back with a true recommendation and ask for an agreement to sign the contract with that hauler. But I think we also need, as a council, to discuss some of the things with, based on the numbers you saw, if we are okay with implementing this program? Because we need to start now if we're going to roll it out by July one. Because it's going to take a long time to halt, to get the cans here, to get them assembled, get them delivered. And I I, we don't want to push this down the road too far, because if we don't get it all done, implemented and running by September, then we also don't, won't receive the grants that's available to us for part of the cans that are, help us be, you know, get some of the rebate back for the cost of the program from the state. I think it's from the state or integrated ways. I don't remember who the grant's from. But uh, what was that?
From the recycling.
The, oh, that's right, it is called the Recycling Partnership. But it's something that's put together by the state, I think. But uh, it is, it is, so, you know, fifteen dollars a can sent, you know, given back to us, which is a sizable amount of money. So if we're going to do the program, I think we need to make sure we have that in place. And so that we can qualify and not miss out on that. It is not mandated that we do this. It used, was at one time that we they, we thought we were going to be mandated. In my humble opinion, I think it will be mandated eventually. Our our current recycling program, at which some, you know, it shows you in the packet, the three hundred people do, they're currently paying fifteen dollars a month for that blue can. Our program, we feel like it will be a reduction of a minimum of five, six dollars. You know, we might be eight dollars, somewhere in that range uh, for that program. So they'll, the people who are currently doing it will save money. We are also talking about an opt-out option. So every citizen who gets a can will have a chance to opt out after thirty days.
I just warned that we last discussed this, that opt out with uh, with us purchasing the can, but it showing up on their bill was like the best option on the table. Was I?
Say that again.
The opt-out with us purchasing the cans and the cost of can showing up on the resident's bill is, was my understanding.
That's, that's a, I mean, it's a fairly big number to to say every resident's going to pay for that can upfront. That's a sixty-five dollar number, plus the cost, you know, plus if we're eight dollars, so then that first bill would be seventy-three dollars. I think that's a little hard to do on someone on a fixed income. And so I I I think we need to either do it where we can, because one of the haulers would say, you know, for so much a month, it's two, two hundred, two dollars and fifty cents a month, they'll provide the cans over the term of that three-year contracts. It is a little, you know, it ends up being more like we're paying, I think, closer to eighty dollars for that can. But they're running that money for the the three-year contract. Is that better, smarter? I mean, that, those are the items we need to discuss. I I don't think it's fair to put that all on one bill for a customer. Um, we've even talked about, because currently our our garbage program, if someone damages a can, like their black cans, they get a bill for that sixty-five dollars. And we're talking about, well, should we put in a fifty cent rate so that, onto the rate so that we can provide those cans, so people aren't having to pay for that too? And there's, there's quite a bit of discussion on that. That's why Dave put a range on there of what, seven, something to uh, to eight, eight ninety-five. I mean, because that is, a lot of those are different. I think the first discussion is, is to make sure that everyone in the council or the majority of the council, however we want to say it, is okay with continuing on with the program. And if so, can we move along on with discussions with the recommended hauler?
I think it's important to know, at this point, if we do implement a recycling program, that WASATC Integrated gives us a oh, what did they call it?
Fifteen percent discount.
Yeah.
On our, uh, so they're but they're, it's it's not on tonnes. They they're at take rate. So so for every can they get at the, at the dumps, they're charging us seven dollars and twenty cents right now. So we will get a reduced rate of fifteen percent if we are, have eighty percent participation in the program. If not, we're going to be paying more because they're also going to have a price increase from integrated ways, most likely in the next, at least the next year. They're having a proposal for this coming this coming meeting. Whether it passes or not, that's up to all your mayors, I think, but um, the uh, that that fifteen percent, let's say they go to, they do a dollar increase, that fifteen percent would get us back down to what we're paying now. What, the one thing I, just a side note, if you look at the um, little spreadsheet that Brett put together of what our current costs are for our, our current black cans, if you notice our second cans, we are actually uh, funding part of that. Most of this was supposed to be a pass-through. It shows you we're paying, we're we're in the hole on that second can. We're subsidizing that to a point. Which I think needs to be corrected.
What's your official recommendation?
Well, right now, we want to just a recommendation to continue with Robinson. So we can zero in on the exact cost.
To move forward, yeah.
So we'll try and, you know, make a decision.
All the, all the, we don't know all the details, but we need to, we would like to select a hauler.
We get the cost and then we can bring it.
Yeah.
But how can you, how can you um, make a determination that this is the one that we should follow if we're not getting a price from them or from any of the competitors?
We had a price, so we put it out to the three.
Okay.
That's what's in the packet. Two came back. The one is at two dollars and
Three dollars.
Three dollars roughly. The other one's at five thirty. I mean, they're considerably more. And that really, the the rest of the services are fairly equal as far as recommendations, past experience.
So help me understand then what you were saying when you said that, um, then we can sit down and negotiate with them the cost of all of these kind of things.
Because they also give us the options for providing the cans. We want to get into the details of that, if that's really something we want to do. We want to know what that cost includes. Is it, you know, include maintenance? We just, we want to be able to get down and say, okay, well, if not, I mean, what does the city want? Do we want to provide those cans?
Right, and they won't do that with us unless we assign a contract with them?
No, they will. We're just trying to select someone, a single source to sit down with now that we have their prices. And there was such a drastic difference in price. Robinson is the the low bidder by far.
Yeah.
You're just looking for council's approval to enter into negotiations with a provider.
Thank you.
And to implement a recycling program.
Yeah, well, there's, there's two questions before me. I I I guess I've interrupted you, so I'll, I'll be quiet.
Well, no, I was just going to say, um, I wouldn't link the two together because um, I I have absolutely no intention of having a recycling program that uh, requires the citizens to get the can and then opt out. Because that means we've paid for all of those cans. I would much rather have it where they opt in, kind of in the situation we are now. Um, because like you said, the uh, uh, waste management has kind of backtracked on uh, when they're going to require it and what they're going to require. So to me, that means we're setting up the program that they've already started to back off of. I would just rather, because it it's a big investment, like you said, to buy all the cans. And if we have even, say, twenty-five percent of the people who are currently not wanting to recycle back out of it, that means we've got twenty-five percent of that order of cans are just going to sit there, but we've already paid for it. So that's, I I'm.
But you won't if the hauler is providing the cans, because they're going to want extra cans. We always, we always order extra cans anyway.
Yeah.
So that would be part, we would have to calculate in.
Okay, so the hauler would actually still on even with them, okay?
Um, also, important to know, if you currently have two cans, this would actually reduce your bill to go to recycling, to replace one of them with the rest. Yeah, replace one with the blue. So the majority of the city, I shouldn't say majority, it was about half, right?
I think.
About half would actually see a decrease in their bill.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to get the the grant, we have to do it that way. We have to do a hundred percent rollout and then give them an option to opt out.
And we, and part of that is, is we, if we don't get eighty percent participation, we don't get the grant money.
And and you keep saying that a grant, is that coming from the state?
It's coming, it's coming, it's coming from the, the recycling partners, is what it's.
Rebate, really, it's not a grant.
Well, they're giving grant money from the state.
Because we have two options, not really a rebate, because we could purchase the cans and then they would give it us the money back. Or we could have the recycling company provide the cans for us, and they've done the upfront charge, and then we would still get the money back in the grant if we negotiate that we own the cans at the end of our contract with them.
So the, and then the other side of that, too, if the the um, I forget what they call it, what the 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 pickup fee, what's? So the, and then the other side of that too, if the, the um, I forget what they call it, what the, the, the pickup fee, what's?
Tipping.
The tipping fee, so that per can goes up. If we're only at fifty percent. We're gonna be paying five dollars a can roughly. I mean, it was in our, I can't remember the exact number. If we get to eighty percent or more, we're at three dollars. And so, I mean, it's pretty tough. I mean, I think to, I don't know how we do an opt-in, cause at opt-in, we will never get up to eighty percent.
No, that's.
I mean, that, you look at it, we have an opt-in now.
Yeah.
We're at three hundred out of two hundred and twen- or two thousand two hundred.
That's why I, I question this mandate and how effective it's going to be, but.
Well, I mean, it's, to me, it's kinda like your, your secondary water. If it's there, I mean, I mean, the integrated waste is gonna fill up faster if we don't do, do something. And it's gonna cost everyone in this city a ton more money for garbage. I mean, I, if we have to start hauling that much sooner, for every year sooner we have to start hauling out past Willow. We've got a problem.
But eventually that's gonna happen.
Eventually, but what does that save the people over those years? Quite a bit.
We're hauling there.
We'll see.
Yeah.
We'll be hauling one hundred percent there. Once they close this down, then one hundred percent spills to Willow.
Yeah, at least that's their plan now.
Two runs a day.
But, but Joel, that is the question for, I mean, one of the questions we need as the committee tonight. Wayne, Wayne hit it on the head, is let, let's, let's do the one. If we wanna say yes, you can move into negotiations with Robinson. But then we also need direction on, from the council, are we going to proceed? Maybe, maybe that one needs to be the first question. Are we going to proceed with the recycling program? And then we come back with a recommendation on what type of recycling program.
I'm gonna jump in here on this one. I, I think there's, the first question, I, do we have a recycling program or not? I think that's, needs further discussion, cause we're missing a lot of information. There's a lot of gaps in the packet that didn't quite come through and you're telling me. I'm hearing from the committee that we can get some of that information if we enter into negotiations with one of the preferred vendors, but not all of it. I think, uh, you know, so I'm trying to separate the two questions. Questioning, do we have a recycle program? I think we need to discuss that and I think there's. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of having a program, what that program is, I need more information as to which one we're gonna do. To the second question, uh, the, on the selection process, um. And I don't mean any shade to the committee, I appreciate what the committee has done. Um, with regards to the recommendation, I'll support the recommendation, but I do want to direct some questions back to staff. I think they did us a disservice on this council. Uh, lack of information. We got an RFP here, which had listed five criteria, but there's no weight on any of those criteria. So what we put here is a qualitative based selection, there's no quantitative aspect to it. We've not been presented on this council any information as to how the council weighed in on the two, what the difference of the scores were on the two. We're just giving that the preference was with Robinson Waste, and I'm not trying to decide there's one better than the other, but we're lacking information. Or to support your recommendation that I think in the future would be best to have in the packet. Uh, we don't need to know what the individual selection committee said for each end of the criteria, but we should have a summation as to what was the basis of the decision. It was, if cost was a control, was cost ninety percent of the score or was it eighty percent of the score? The public needs to know what was the selection based upon. We got some criteria, but it means nothing, cause there's nothing supporting that information. So I'll get off my lecture box on that. Given that the committee is making a recommendation, I would, I would support engaging into uh, negotiations. With the recommended firm, but I think we need to come back with that information. As to how that feeds into the recycle program to be able to make more informed decisions if it's opt-in, opt-out, no can, can provided. Uh, before we can move any further, so with that, I will support the recommendation that's put in the committee on, on entering negotiations with Robinson Waste.
We have a motion. Someone like to second that motion?
Hey, tell me what the motion was. Well.
We continue.
We continue.
We continue the negotiation with Robinson Waste.
So that means we're deciding we will be doing?
No, I just.
I mean, we will, no contract will be signed.
But I mean, I feel like. If we say yes, we wanna have a recycling program tonight, that doesn't mean that we're saying yes and then whatever comes up. Let me, how am I gonna say this? We're not committing anything specific with the recycling program tonight, if we get recommendation. That you want to pursue a recycling program.
So will the committee then uh, start working with them to determine not just one model? But another model of um, not mandating it throughout the, the rest of the city?
We'll come back with three options.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And the different costs with each option.
Can I ask another question though, since we're already discussing this? Um, the program start date, I personally would really like it to start on July first. It gives us time as a committee to get this work, we'll have to start quickly on it, but we really need to have that implemented. So we are eligible for a grant.
It also helps with fiscal, fiscal stuff for our accounting side.
The only thing I can say to that is that, um, if they're currently not requiring yet, I'm surprised that they're not moving back the. Um, grant or.
So.
So.
Wasatch Integrated is helping distribute the grant. But they're not the ones that are providing the grant, so they're on whatever time, a different timetable, not their own, if that makes sense.
I, I guess, Mayor, what's your feeling on whether, is this gonna eventually be mandated or is it not? You were part of that decision?
Yeah, I, I am, but I don't know that I. Can give you an answer to that, I, I, I think eventually, yeah, that it's. It will be mandated. I think they'll have to, cause I think the cost is gonna be so great once they close that landfill. I think probably at that time they'll, if this isn't up and running and doing well, I think then at that time they probably would mandate it, yeah.
And how many years is that? That we, I'm sure they projected.
Uh, right now they're saying about seven, seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen?
Didn't they say this would add, and, and so many years, if we could, if every city implemented it eighty percent?
That's probably, it was like, there's such a difference between the seven and fifteen.
Yeah.
The seven's gonna come up quicker if we're not, but eventually, you know.
I thought they said it added five years.
You know, it'll delay it out fifteen if we get going on it, so.
There is a motion.
I know.
I know, I just, I wanna utilize our time though, sorry, because this is here.
She may fail without a second.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second all in favor, say aye.
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 Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
What specific information um, or questions does the council have and is seeking from the committee?
I'm taking notes.
I'll just tell you my opinion on it. I don't think unless you're going to mandate it and force people to do it. I don't think we're going to get an eighty percent, so I think we need to look at specifically. Even if we got seventy-five percent participation in it, that's gonna change the bill and how much is that gonna change by? Um, because I, I just can't see everybody in the city who hasn't. Uh, done recycling suddenly want to or allow it to be forced on them, so. Uh, that's, that's all I wanna know is just, if, if we don't reach that, what's the numbers that we're looking at on both ways?
And we can do that ver- pretty easily, cause it's fifty, it goes from fifty up to eighty percent, so even if it's fifty percent participation. That cost is gonna be the same until we get to eighty percent participation, so we can do that very easily. One of the other aspects to this, and, and, and I'd like to know your opinion is uh, on the new move-ins. We weren't going to have it as a option to opt out. So in the other cities that I'm familiar with. You don't get an option when you move in as a new resident. You get a blue can and a black can.
And you can't opt out of it.
And you can't opt out of it.
So the opt-out, the opt-out is.
What's that?
Being grandfathered in.
What's Washington and St. George?
I think most of.
They, so like Washington, when they implemented theirs, they had a thirty-day opt-out when they delivered a can to every house.
And all the new move-ins.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I mean, just, I've said it in the committee, I mean, I have a blue can, I pay for a blue can down there, but I'm never there, so I, I, it's just a wasted blue can. But I can't, I've tried to opt out, you cannot opt out of it, and so.
Wasatch Integrated originally, when they started down this process, was talking about mandating this bundled type program. Throughout the district and then have backed off to allowing the opt-out as an option and still qualifying for the diversion percentage. Decrease on that tipping fee.
Yeah.
It just wouldn't be without the grant.
The, the thing that, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think a lot of the questions that are getting answered, that are getting asked. If, if I'm remembering correctly, when they came and they presented that deck, I think there's a lot of answers in that deck. Is it possible to resurrect that deck and send it out to us, just that we can?
It was a. When Wasatch Integrated came and presented?
Yeah.
Sure.
The, the other one that is a very big number and we, that, it fifteen percent off is a, is a big number. And so.
Can I clarify one thing? We've talked around a couple of items. The city doing a recycling program makes us eligible for two separate things. Having the program at all and having a greater than eighty percent take rate would give us a diversion discount. On our tipping fee at Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District. We currently pay seven dollars and twenty cents per can, per resident, per month. To them for that tipping fee, right, the dumping fee there at the landfill. Whatever diversion percentage that our recycling program generates away from the landfill. Will give us that percentage off the seven dollars and twenty cents per month tipping fee. So that's the ten or fifteen percent that keeps being talked about, that we would get that off of the monthly bill for every single resident. Um, there's discussion of that seven twenty becoming eight twenty or something, depending on what. Wasatch Integrated does with their own rate this fiscal season. But that's one thing we would become eligible for if we have a qualifying program. Eighty percent take rate, the bundled fee for new, new residents and an opt-out or mandate for our rollout. Um, the other thing that we could become eligible for is if we own the cans. We could get fifteen dollars per can in a rebate or a grant. That is available to us until September. If the program is up and running by September, then we could get that money. Those are the two incentives that we are looking at and that's what's creating the timeline right now. If we chose to do nothing, then our seven dollars and twenty cents per month tipping fee stays the same. Depending on whatever they choose with their own rates. We would not receive any diversion discount rate, it would just remain at the hundred percent amount. Those are the two different things we're trying to get and that's why the timeline is now. But if we did nothing, we could walk away from the grant option and we could walk away from the diversion discount option.
And we'll try to give you basically, if we do nothing, what it's costing us. The fifty percent option is where you're really at, but the option two and the eighty percent option and what it's gonna, all the three different scenarios and what it's gonna cost the city. It's just, just the fifteen percent tipping fee reduction is over twenty-three hundred dollars a month savings to the city. But that's gonna, I mean, we pass those costs. We, yeah, we pass all those costs directly on to this, to the citizen. So it's, I mean, when you times that out over time, and let's say it's an extra five years at the dump. That's, that's a lot of money that is gonna be paid.
Also, one other thing to consider, um, Wasatch Integrated works on a fiscal year like we mentioned, but if they do increase their fees. They would increase it starting fiscal year and it would be July one. So if we had any rate increase, it would be great to do it at the same time and not have a discussion. Two months apart, one month apart, five months apart, however, we end up implementing it.
Okay, so let me. It's all right. Um, just so I can handle it in my brain right now, cause I, I, I think Dave, you, you helped a lot on that. So right now, if we do nothing, um, really what's gonna happen then is that we're gonna have a fifteen percent pickup rate, which we have right now. Which means that when um, the waste management company or the, the dump, let's just put in that. Um, they're gonna start charging or have a, a higher charge. We don't get any type of discount, we don't get any type of change, it's just business as normal and we accept the normal hike.
Exactly.
Um, then, separate from that is the implementation. The implementation then is who we go with, which it looks like we're going to be going with Wasatch Integration, is that who?
Robinson, Robinson.
Robinson, yeah, oh, okay, Robinson Waste. If we go with them, then negotiations are not anything about meeting that eighty percent. This is just how we're going to fulfill the program itself. Whether it's a, stays the same fifteen percent pickup rate or if we can get up above the eighty percent. So, okay, I, I see the difference too on it now, um, so that, that really did help me a lot, I appreciate it.
I might be repeating a lot that's already been said, but to get it out of my brain, uh, to your question, what are you looking back from the council? Uh, I think we need to get a report back and all this, I'm gonna go to the end in mind, all this needs to lead into a PR campaign. It's a lot of the public aren't listening to what's going on here and they're gonna be shocked when they start seeing whatever's gonna be on their billing statement. So we have a PR campaign that we gotta get ahead of real quick. But to my direction, if I was to give you direction, there's a do-nothing approach. I think, you know, uh, Joel just talked about that, if we do nothing, what's the impact to our citizens to do nothing? That means no recycling program, okay? I think we're all kinda like, we wanna hear what the recycle program is, but we need to have these negotiations. Uh, to find out what some of these particular costs are. I'd like to see, you know, if it's all or nothing, you know, if everybody has to participate right away. What's those impacts gonna be on their bill? You know, what the numbers are gonna be? I'd also like to understand those who have already got the cans, three hundred people, what kind of benefit can we extend them? For they've already been recycling for many years, maybe there's something we could do, uh, you know, on the city sites who kinda get dollars, they've already been recycling. Um, if we're gonna do some, you know, maybe opt in, but everyone's, everyone's gonna eventually do this, but maybe there's a gradation. Maybe those people who wanna do it at first, if we get twenty-five percent to do it at first, they get a, a significant kickback for a while. And we get up to, you know, after year two, if you wanna get in, you get a lesser a kickback, up to maybe a three, four-year program, if we wanna grade, do a gradation and bring them in. Uh, maybe some people can't do it first year, but they wanna do it second year. What are those options? Without putting a whole bunch of options out there, we kinda need to see, what is this program, we gonna cost this, if we do nothing, what's gonna cost us if it's everything at once? And what can it be if we, if we phase in over three years? Either buying the cans or renting the cans, whatever that means, that feeds into each one of those options. That's what I would like to see, and then we could sit back and say, yeah, this seems to be the greatest option or the greatest role and direction for our citizens. We can move on that, then you can move forward with your PR campaign, get the costs out there, get the information out there well before July first.
And just to, for integrated waste, the pat on the back, is they are going to provide all of our education. And with flyers, packets, I mean, they're doing all of that with our logo on it, they're gonna do all that for us and. We actually just had, have to get them those numbers and that they're gonna do it, I mean, they're talking, starting three months before. And starting to educate that, they are willing to do it and they're paying for that to be done.
I appreciate that, that's, that's a great benefit.
And I, I forgot to tell everybody that, but that is one thing they, they've offered and they said, once you have it determined what, who you're using, what you're doing. They actually have, you know, like the stickers for the cans and all that stuff, so, but yeah, just, just, so everybody knows that is what integrated waste is willing to do.
And I wanna appreciate the committee and all the effort they put forward to this point, uh, getting this information to us, so thank you.
I just have one last comment, and I'll, I mean, I'll say last so that I don't say anything, that's what I mean. Just going off of what Wayne said, if we could actually figure out how much the cost difference is going to be. Um, then maybe the committee could actually look at programs, like he was saying, that incentivize joining in, whether that first year. Because if we're gonna be saving, say, a hundred thousand dollars. Then conceivably, we have that money that even at a break-even point, we could put into either giving some type of. Um, uh, whether it's a rebate from the city, whether it's a slow program introduction. Uh, maybe we're just funding it, or maybe we're giving a big marketing push and trying to get everyone into it. But see if there's any type of way that we could incentivize the voluntary move over to the eighty percent. Even if, like you said, it takes a, a couple of years to do that, with the amount that we'd be saving by going that way. So that's.
I do wanna say, that's why this, I hope. We tried to get as much information in here as possible, but there's so many variables and so that's why it's difficult. But trying to get you to have an idea of where the cost would range and. Um, as far as the incentive program goes though, we really wanna try to get up to eighty percent or we don't get the benefit as a city as a whole, so.
Cause really, all we're trying to do is pass through our hard costs, so if we do incentivize it, it's going to be at, on the city's dime. And, and I'm not saying I'm not okay with that a little. It's going to be at on the city's dime. And and I'm not saying I'm not okay with that a little bit, because I think. Maybe there's a program to work that in a couple of months. But we will not get the benefits. If it's that eighty percent is not in place. By that, it's a certain time, so. Exactly, I, yeah.
You can have people volunteer before the program starts and there's a certain incentive, say, by September first, if you're not on board, here's your center. And after September first, everyone's gonna be on board, here's your cost, but you can get to the eighty percent, but how do you wanna, how do you wanna get there? Rather than just rip the bandaid off and say, hey, guys, July one, here you go, here's a fifteen dollar bill.
There's actually a lot of really good. Examples of rollout options. Um, we're not the first city that's done something like this, even within the county and within the district. They have provided, um, very good data on what are the take rates, what are the partition, participation rates of an opt in and opt out? And a mandatory type program. Yes, there, it it has become very clear over time that there are many people that would participate if the can was there in front of them. They would have to be actively and passionately opposed to then actively opt out. Whereas the passion required to opt in. Has to be much higher, um, but once somebody is participating and they have it there, then they generally do not. Um, opt out. So the, I can share you, share with you some of that data from Wasatch Integrated that shows those different. Options and the types of take rates that come from opt in, opt out or what.
The message is we're trying to save our landfill, we're trying to extend the landfill. It's not like, hey, we're trying to get more money out of you. There's the yin and the yang, but the message here, we're trying to extend the life of our landfill, this is how you can help. That should be the message.
Da- Davis, Davis probably gonna cringe when I say this, but, I mean, this is a big. Item, I mean, so right now, currently, our recycle program is really not even through the city. This is, it's a hundred percent through ACE. You have to get your can through ACE, I mean, we're not, we are adding. A program. To the city, is it something we? That everybody wants to be involved in a work meeting? Or do you wanna, are you still okay doing it as a committee? Okay, I just wanted you to have that option so that it was not something that. We were excluding anybody from all those discussions, so.
One final thing for me, we'll see if I can follow that as well, but, um. We've talked around this idea a- as well, but. There are different, um, residents throughout the city that have taken advantage of of our service. For trash pickup and non-service for recycling, um, in various ways. So those that just have one single can of garbage pickup, we would be adding. A monthly bill of, you know, approximately. Seven to nine dollars, right? It would be additional cost for them. For those that currently, and that's about one thousand of the of the two thousand, right? About half. Or eleven hundred of the twenty two hundred, to be more accurate. The, those eleven hundred that have a second can. Um, if they were to switch out their second can and did recycling in place of it, that would be a monthly bill decrease for them. For the three hundred people that have recycling through ACE. This would replace that and they would also receive a. Bill decrease because our program will be cheaper than the ACE one directly.
That's like, Raj, you brought that up, cuz who owns the ACE cans? Does ACE own them? Do the homeowners own? So they gotta buy a brand of can?
Pretty sure ACE owns them.
So they're gonna have to get a new can, and who provides them that new can if they've already been participating in a recycling program? That's one of my concerns, those.
There. Um, there has been conversation with ACE about what a transition would look like. Um, and there's a lot of moving parts to that, but. Potentially, somebody owning that can that they already had with ACE. Um, we could talk about that and see, you know, so we're not replacing their cans, they've they've already got one, but. I I, that's one of those moving details, I think, that we would need to.
That's that's one of the questions we have is who owns those cans.
Okay. Any more discussion? No, I'm not even gonna offer those. Okay, we'll move along here, we've got a discussion item, uh, training, annual training that we're gonna do. And Jamie Bike, your attorney is going to take care of that for us. So we'll turn the time to Jamie.
I'm gonna be fast, Wayne. I, um. Today's a funny day for me. I build a little journal I keep and I sit down for five minutes in the morning, kind of jot out my intentions and then every evening I'll go through and review it. And today I attended a board meeting at the, um, Jordan Basin Improvement District and did their open and public meetings and ethics training and. Now I'm finishing with South Weber City. Um, ethics and, uh, open meetings training, it just feels a little bit like. Um, two bookends. At the beginning and end of the day, but. Uh, we've been through this before, so I'm not gonna belabor it. We have a requirement to get through it, but I'm gonna try to do it in about five minutes. And just remind you of. What the legal requirements are. Lisa has, uh. A presentation she's gonna put on the screen, I don't need it to fly through it. You all know that. You're a public body, as a public body, you have an obligation to conduct your deliberations openly. That means you have to meet on city business in open meetings. Those meetings, anytime you have a quorum, have to be publicly noticed. You have to keep minutes, you have to keep a recording of that, uh, meeting. You have to organize yourselves and conduct yourselves in an orderly fashion. You are able to meet electronically, join meetings electronically, as long as you, um, have an anchor location and. Fulfill the other obligations of the act. Yes. Correct, that's right. Yeah, there's five of you, so. Yeah, quorum's a simple majority. Um, the mayor doesn't vote except for uncertain matters, and so you count the quorum by the voting members of the of the council, so it's three. Um, you're, you have to keep written minutes of every meeting. Michelle does a fantastic job of putting those together and then bringing them back to you to be approved. Uh, the meetings are posted to the Open and Public Meetings. Act on the state website, and so they're available for folks that wanna go through and look at at what's there. When you adopt resolutions, uh, that relate to land use ordinances, you have to hold a hearing. Those kinds of resolutions are. Um, handled appropriately in the city. You may close meetings for certain purposes, it requires a two thirds vote, which is four of your five members. Uh, you have to state when you go into a closed meeting and vote on that, the reason why you're going into the closed meeting, the most often. Cited reasons are for personnel type decisions, that's to discuss an individual's character. Professional competence or physical or mental health. You can go into closed session and talk about litigation, and you'll often go into closed session to talk about real property. There are other reasons in the statute for which you can go into a closed session, but those are the ones you'll use most frequently. Uh, you are not able to go into closed session to interview somebody for a vacancy for an elected office, so if there were a vacancy on the council and you had to hold a closed session for that purpose. You would have to do that, or you wanted to interview somebody, you would have to do that openly. Recordings are required for most closed sessions, two exceptions where you don't have to record is when you're talking about the character or professional competence of an individual. Or if you're talking about safety or security. Uh, you don't keep a recording there. You, yes. It can, yeah, if you, if you have IT protocols that would be to keep somebody from invading your system or from committing fraud. You could talk about those protocols in a closed session without keeping a recording. So physical safety, IT safety. Um, I attended a meeting a few weeks ago where they were, um, working through active shooter protocols and that's in a closed session without recording. Uh, chance or social gatherings, we've talked about this in the past, the act doesn't apply if you're together for country fair days or you're together for. Um, some kind of social activity. Uh, be it church, sports, whatever, wherever it may be that you bump into each other. Uh, but you cannot use those opportunities with a quorum present to talk about city business or to conduct city business. Uh, that has to be done during an open meeting. There's a criminal penalty for a violation of the act. And that prohibition applies whether you're physically present together or whether you're together virtually, be it in an email string. Um, text messages, uh, Facebook chat, uh, anything like that. With a quorum, correct, yeah. Any questions before I pivot from open and public meetings? Okay. Let's talk briefly about the Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Act. As you all know, the state law establishes the minimum standards for ethics you may choose as a. As a public body and in your own ordinances to adopt. Higher standards than where, but I wanna go through the state minimum standards. It basically sets up a disclosure system and then, um, tells you the ways that you can violate that by not disclosing the right things. The things that are improper, you can't use information improperly, so you can't disclose or improperly use private controlled or protected information. So if you come across information that relates to personnel, uh, procurements, real property transactions. That you know is private protected or is a draft, uh, that kind of information you have to keep. The. According to its designation or its classification until such time as it's public. You cannot use your privileges to attempt to, uh, get economic gain or secure privileges for yourself or for another person. You cannot knowingly receive, accept, take, seek or solicit a gift. Of substantial value or a substantial economic benefit tantamount to a gift. So if you got a special deal at a store or you got a special deal on a loan or. Uh, financial service. That would be a gift. Uh, you cannot be paid to help somebody with the city with business they have before the city without making the right disclosures for. Uh, being able to do that thing. So talking about disclosure, you have often to make written and oral disclosures, especially if you're helping somebody. Do business with the city. Uh, that written disclosure has to occur ten days before you have an agreement, they have an agreement with the city or ten days before you receive compensation. Whichever is earlier. And then that disclosure also has to be made orally. At the time of a meeting and before there is discussion on the topic for which you have a conflict. Um, yeah, Joe.
Quick question on that, so, um. If the. If the. Uh, say like, we have a a a meeting for somebody who's coming and doing business with the city. Um, and as long as we don't have any type of, uh, conflict with them, especially if. Um, they're paid versus not being paid. So if I, if I help somebody who is coming to the city and wanting to fill out the paperwork and to put something in front of the city. As long as I'm not being paid, I can do it, or it really should be either way.
Uh, that's a really good question, because there's, there's a customer service aspect to that, and I think if you had somebody that was saying. How do I navigate the city process from kind of a customer service standpoint? You're not compensated at all and you're pointing them in the right direction vis a vis. Your office as a member of the city council and you say, you know, you really ought to call. Um. So and so in the city, they can help you through this and here's the paperwork that you'll wanna bring. That kind of thing's fine. I think the moment that you're going to accept compensation to help them get through something. Then you would have an issue where you have to make a written disclosure and you have to make an oral disclosure. So if you had. A neighbor come forward and say, hey, I'm going to petition the city for a land use change and I want you to help me shepherd it through the process. And to do that, I wanna give you, um. You know, maybe a percentage of the cash account for the project.
Or investment.
Yeah, exactly. You would immediately have to say to them. Either, no, I cannot do that. And I would recommend documenting that so you have a record of it. Or if you do choose to do it and want to do it. Um, state law would allow it, I wouldn't recommend it, but it does allow it. You would at that moment have to make a written disclosure, either to the mayor. Um, or to myself, and then we could work through. Um, helping you document it and do the right paperwork on that disclosure. And then before that item came forward for consideration by the city council, you would have to make a a public oral disclosure. During the meeting when that matter comes forward. Uh, on disclosures, there's a requirement that you all make a written disclosure of any, um, known or potential conflicts of interest. I believe Lisa circulated that document already, uh, and is ahead of things on that. I I'm kudos to her, I nutshered this morning and said, hey. We need to get this done before the thirty first, and she was already way ahead of it. And I know had already sent it out and began collecting it. Some exceptions to the rules, there, there is an exception to the rule against gifts, you can receive an occasional, occasional non pecuniary gift. Of fifty dollars, non pecuniary meaning not cash, not monetary. Uh, so, you know, that could be less than fifty dollars, a a lunch, a movie ticket, uh, those kinds of things that. Would be okay, again, I wouldn't recommend it, but. Occasionally, you will have a lunch meeting or something like that, and I think that's why. Uh, this kind of carve out is there. You can receive an award presented for public service, you can receive a bona fide loan within the ordinary course of business. Uh, so if you walk into a bank and you, uh, get a a loan on normal commercial terms. But the loan officer is somebody that has business before the city. That's okay, as long as the loan is on the commercial terms that would be available to anybody that walked into that bank to to get a loan. And then there is a carve out for political campaign contributions, I would just. Caution you to be cautious and diligent about who you receive those contributions from and the timing of those. Contributions and I I've put on here a little article that ran in the paper a few years ago and it was. A board member at UTA that received a campaign contribution, but. Didn't realize that at the next UTA board meeting, there would be a construction contract. On the agenda that involved the entity that gave that donation. Uh, and then another point of caution, another point of caution is simply that. Um, there can be consequences, even if you adhere to the law just because of appearances. Um, that even if you're paying for something, if it appears to be a benefit or appears to be a gift. Or it wouldn't be available to the general public, um, then that can have. Consequences, they may not be legal consequences, but they exist. Uh, criminal penal penalties vary based on the dollar value of the compensation, the conflict or the assistance. And there is a requirement that if you violate the act and commit one of these crimes, that you are mandatorily dismissed from. Employment or removed from office. So for employees, it's employment, for. Officers or elected officials, it's removal from office. And then the transaction in which, in which you were involved is rescinded. That's it. Thank you.
Jamie, is there statute of limitations on those?
No.
Thank you. I don't have anything to disclose.
Thank you, Jamie. Anyone have any new business they would like to bring up?
I do, I have two. One is. Can we please, 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 please? Please get those noise signs ordered. And put, even if we don't. Um. What is the word? Enforce it? Even if we can't enforce it, can we please just put the signs up? Because I think it will help dissuade some people. Noise ordinance signs on eighty nine.
Engine brakes.
Yeah, sounds like a personal problem.
You know what?
Elbow.
I have had so many people talk to me about this, actually.
And I have too. I'm just giving you better.
I know, I know, but I know we can't enforce it, I mean, we could, it's not likely, but. If we could, please. Cuz they have them in Leighton, right on one ninety three and on eighty nine, it's like no big deal to me if we just put them up and maybe it will help with some of this. Okay, thank you. Um, second one, and I hope everybody. Um. I'm I'm feeling real, I wanna get kind of everybody's temperature for, uh. This Zoom that we're doing, because I'm feeling so bad for Lisa that she's over here flipping back and forth, trying to share everything. I feel like as a city, this is way above and beyond when she shares every single thing that people bring in to us. On Zoom, I don't feel like that's really truly necessary. And there are plenty of cities who will like tell you what the agenda is and that's that. So I feel like this is really causing a lot of, uh. Undo stress for her to go back and forth, to come back into Zoom, to screen share for people who might be watching. I mean, for example, this presentation, they probably didn't need that, but she is doing that to make sure people are informed. Probably not super necessary. So trying to get as much information out there to everybody, but if someone is watching and they have the dialogue, I feel like that's probably enough. Or if everybody says no, they want her to keep screen sharing, then I. Or if everybody says no, they want her to keep screen sharing, then I propose we buy her a computer that she can have two different things to maybe have one that's just for Zoom and one for the agendas. And Zoom is just going, and then she's not flipping back and forth.
I like your second suggestion more than your first. I I think the presentations that are being presented, I can't see presenter having in front of me helps understand a lot. I also understand going back and forth from Zillow, so having two computers, if that's manageable. But I I do know a lot of cities and I do know that the council members do get the presentation information put in front of that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I we still want, I still want us to have the information. So I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that it, I feel like people are coming in to get the information and not everybody's able to do that. But if someone is watching it on Zoom or on, excuse me, on YouTube. I'm just trying to simplify this for Lisa because I feel like it's way, way too much. Like if it was me, I would not want to do what she's doing. So if we need to give her another computer or something that makes that simpler.
I'd agree with more on that because I don't want to cut out the transparency that people that are watching it on YouTube are able to see exactly what we're seeing. I I think that that's very important. And whatever we can do to make it easier for that to happen, I think we should. But, yeah, I I still put paramount the transparency of what we do and how we do it.
I agree. I agree, and I want transparency too. I'm just saying that there's a cost associated with that. So if we're doing that, then it's going to be another $1,000.
It's as easy as two screens. The the rea- the reason I was asking, I mean, is I I like it just like this, or if a developer comes in, it's now recorded on the video, not just our interpretation of minutes or anything else. I I actually, I like I like having it on there and recorded as part of the recording, but if it's simpler, we would support it, but that's.
There are easier ways to do it. It may be just a change of the software that we have to add into it that would make it. Because a lot of the, my wife had to do a ton of these YouTube videos back during COVID for teaching. And there's a lot of ways that you can set those up, move things in and work with other programs very quickly through that. So it might just be a change from Zoom or some Zoom tools that we have to get for it. But, yeah, I agree, it definitely, it's it's hard to go back and forth through all of those and anything we can do to help, we should.
Okay, so direction from the council, we can give staff direction to invest in something to make that simpler for Lisa. Okay.
And if you need those softwares, let me know. I can get you the names and where they're at.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else with new business?
I do. This one is separate from my council report, but I did just send over to Dave and Lance a and some code that I wrote in draft for them to go over. The state requires us to have some type of policy for concussions and head trauma, especially with our recreation programs and sports. So I've sent them over there some code that would address that. And basically, what it does is it tells the employees how to look at it, require training, require permission slip from the parents of people that are going to be in it in recreation programs. And if something does happen, the the participant is immediately pulled out of it. And if it is suspected, they will not allow that person back into the sport during that or later on until some type of medical professional has given the okay that they are capable of coming back to it. It's a very simple one. I don't know when it will come before the council, but I wanted to give everybody a heads up on that one. And then the second one is we had a complaint, if we can call it that, about dog pooping and some of the issues on it. Does the council want to look at raising the fine for second or third offenses? Do we want to just raise the initial? I think since we don't have an enforcement angle to it, about the only thing you can do is make the fine scarier or figure out a way to enforce the dogs not on a leash and pooping in other people's yards. You guys have any?
Lisa won't say it, but she's never had any complaints on that in court. They've never come to the court.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Would they come to the court?
They would.
Yeah. If it was taken.
Oh, yeah, if it was taken, yeah.
Your point, we don't have an enforcement program. It's what's very difficult for any of our ordinances because we don't have an enforcement that active. It's a reactive, and oftentimes if it's reactive, people don't show up in time to be able to cite anyone. So it's velvet hammer is what we have. Until we get a code enforcement program, we just have velvet hammers.
Is there any, anyone have any preference either way, do it or not do it?
It would be a fraction. Simple citation. Have an escalation provision in the statute right now. I think it's $100 the first offense, and then it doubles every time. So it goes 100, 200, 300, or I guess it goes up in $100 increments. To Councilmember Windsor's point, I think you have to have an active enforcement program. You go after those kinds of things, and it's difficult to cite somebody, you know, if those are your first candidate. You can cite somebody based on photographs or some other evidence.
I didn't realize this, that they were that high already, so that's surprising to me.
I'm fine with how it is.
Anyone else with new business? Michael, back to your comment on cameras up at the Park and Ride. Dave, did we, Dave, did we not look into that? From what I remember, we looked into that and didn't you not say no, that they would not put cameras up there? Yeah. Okay, committees, let's start with Wayne.
I'll default to Joe for the only committee meeting I've said here, so he's the chair.
I finally met in a lot of these committees. The Parks Committee, fantastic, we're actually going to kind of take a step back from that one. Shay has been doing fantastic managing not only the personnel but everything that's getting done. Right now she has a full staff, so they're not having to try to hire somebody, which is great for what they need. Of course, they do have their seasonal employees. They've taken care of locking down all the parks. And if you haven't noticed, even during these cold temperatures, they're still out working on the parks. They just finished some stuff over by the dog park where they rolled down some gravel, cleaned out the area. It's really good. They've been doing some fantastic stuff. And just at the beginning of winter, I don't think I reported it. They also planted three new trees over by the pickleball court. So this will grow quickly and provide shade for the pickleball and also block some of the wind that we get coming from the east over there. So we we should have more trees come soon, well, during spring. But and then the the other one, we had our code committee meeting today. And we've decided to look at a number of different issues that are kind of facing the city right now. And I will be sending out kind of a survey to each one of the council, just trying to find out what your temperature is on. We did find that we can require certain things as part of the application process. So we're going to make a list of what's available, and I'll be contacting you guys about that. So. And that's it.
I forgot one, I may come back for a second. And this is more of a question, staff, we're near the end of the month and we still have not seen the audit or the audit report. I'm a little concerned as to when we're going to get that and be able to submit it to the state, even though it's supposed to be by the end of the year, we're given 30 days. So can you give us an update as to when we can see that?
I can give the the date. This afternoon, I did receive a draft form of our financial statement. They still plan that they will have it done by the 30th. I have provided the the draft to some of the those that are over the different bonds that we have. I know they have to have their dated by the 30th, and so they they were given the draft, and that's enough information for them. Their requirements, but bug them every day in hopes that we get it, and they're working very hard, they're trying to get that.
Angie.
I have none. Thank you.
Um, municipal utilities, you basically got what we met on. But as as requested on the public works, I don't know if everybody got that email with the updated schedule from the general contractor for the public works, but currently we are, our completion date is August 18th, to answer your question. So I have not been over there in a week to see if they've started on the main building. But the metal skin and that has started going up on the vehicle storage. So they're moving right along. The weather's been, knock on wood, very helpful. I mean, even though it's been cold, it's been nice, and they've been able to continue work with no delays.
I think they've got all the roofing on that.
They might have had the roofing on the last, but the sides, the sides were all on the last time. You can see them, you can, you can see the mayor's color, so if you want to see what color it is.
It's out to the north, and I noticed they're running north then, so I think it's probably.
Okay, they're Angie's too. If you want to go onsite, I would recommend you come Wednes- Wednesdays when one of us is there. Otherwise, you just need P P E, P P P P E, your personal protective stuff. So they just want hard hats and vests and stuff to keep them. We're at 10 o'clock on on the tomorrow. It's every other Wednesday we meet, so we're meeting tomorrow. So.
We're going to go late at night.
But if you, you know what, you know what, if you wanted to call me, I have enough stuff you could, we could just meet and go over there too.
Okay, I would like to go, that's that one, that time.
They may just see us someone they don't know and wonder what the heck's going on, so. The only other item, and I maybe I should have brought up a new business, was just to make, and maybe this is for our code enforcement, House Bill 256, that's currently, I had two other bills and I forgot to write them down, but is dealing with short term rentals that we can now enforce short term rental. Policies or code based on online searches. And that's new, so and you can actually now send a letter to the the rental company saying that they are not following our code.
Yeah, that that's one of the bills that was talked about in L P C. Yeah, it's coming coming through the process, but it does allow online activity to now be part of what the city looks at. Not that, yeah, it it clarifies some of that language that showed up a few years ago that really limited cities in using online information as part of the evidence of activity. So they're they're opening that door for us.
Can we go back just one thing on the on the Public Works Building rather than maybe, I'll just, I was wondering if we can get maybe a monthly, you know, project report other than a verbal report, but something in a packet, a few pictures. You know, what have they accomplished in the last four weeks, what they plan to accomplish? So we can see what the progress photos are doing. Or do we set up a 30 minute work session where as a council, we go out there and get a a tour of certain stages of.
And I like that idea. I actually meant to go get pictures. I just didn't get there. And so that we had something like that, I think that'd be good. It's, yeah, it'd be nice.
Staff could do or something like that, but I think it'd be something good to put into the the board packet that publicly would appreciate it and just kind of see what's going on, what the progress is. And you can either get it, where are we at with the budget if you want to get that far, but just something would be helpful.
We're supposed to know that? I'm just kidding.
Must be getting late, huh?
Okay, Dave, do you have anything you want to report on L P C or anything?
Nothing specific that I feel you need to bring up. It is, you know, the beginning of the session, and so things I think are going to move quickly as we as we go along, right? The next 40 days are going to be pretty intense that way. We won't really have another city council update on legislative matters until the end of February with our next, you know, city council meeting. Because that's not part of the retreat agenda, and so I encourage you to just watch your email for the daily updates from the league as well as the Friday facts. Feel free to reach out to myself or the mayor or Angie as the voting members of L P C. But, yeah, we just, we want to be diligent in in watching what's going on there because the conversation yesterday at L P C, there were already some pretty bad ideas. I know there are bills every year that the league supports that are helpful, but we tend to talk about the ones that are not very helpful to us, and and there are already ones that we want to put some political capital behind. And the league, you know, it said, hold off because things are are just coming out, and there's always conversation with the bill sponsors and and whatnot. But if there's ever action that they want the cities to take and elected officials specifically to reach out to our own legislators, then just watch for those action alerts. But that's really the only L P C. Update as of now.
Thank you, Dave. Nothing else? Well, let's look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.